Call a meeting in the order and ask for a roll call.
Blunier.
Here.
Hilliard.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Mennel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no public hearing, presentation. Oh, man, do we do have presentations. You'd like to come up to the podium? Introduce yourself. And welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Good to be here. My name is Ryan McQuaid with Cypress Creek Renewables, here to re-present, rather, a project we're calling Bungalow Solar out on the corner of North Main. And we're looking to revise a couple of site issues and kind of present through that. All right. So, jumping in here, starting off with just an introduction of the company itself. So, I guess overview of Cypress Creek. We're a renewal, specifically a solar developer. Started in 2014, been working throughout the country, but specifically seventeen in Illinois recently. But we have over three hundred and fifty operational projects now at this point and over three point seven gigs of solar. So exciting times specifically in Illinois here. We have a several projects we're working on, one of which here in Village Morton. But as I mentioned, those seventeen are highlighted on the state map there. And then we also operate thirty-eight projects in Illinois that are in existence. And many of you may or may not know, a lot of this is stemming from public funding that's coming through based on recent legislation for the Climate and Eco-friendly Jobs Act. So certainly a really exciting time in the state for solar development. Kind of skip through that. And then, see the subject matter. So, this project was actually presented and approved many years ago, 2018, and now it's coming back to life here. And in doing so, a couple site-related design aspects have been modified. So that's really the intent presenting here tonight, specifically the access road and the point of interconnection for offloading the energy back onto the grid with Imran. So this is the original design here. You can see the solar array grid here, fenced in our parcels up here. And our previous access point was out to North Main. At the county, there was some concern, and I think at several levels, there was concerns of how were we connecting there? So skipping through, I guess touching on Tazewell County has approved our site expansion. This is just the final step here. But in addition, we had a two-megawatt panel layout, so about half, three arrays, and we've expanded now to a five-megawatt panel layout. Again, looking back at this access point, this is the revised site access. So coming up all the way to Lakeland Road, kind of along the parcel line. And we feel like this is a better connection, but wanted to obviously present this here tonight. And then, secondly, the point of interconnection. So there's a currently overhead electric along North Main. What we would be doing would be proposing several additional distribution poles and the interconnection overhead line would go over North Main to an existing Imran pole per their design. So that's what we're working with. There is an existing small web link just went out here that's were offset significantly from the right-of-way. Yeah, pretty short and sweet. Questions can open up to the board.
All right. How married are you with the idea of putting those poles up on North Main near Cortland? We're doing a lot of work on the intersection coming up at Cortland and Main, and we're putting some light poles from around the interstate north to about the area where you're at coming up. I've seen the poles, the wood with the cross, and I was wondering if it wouldn't serve better to move them up towards Lakeland where you're coming in and moving them there and tie it in there as opposed to across Main Street at Cortland. And at the very top, can you follow the railroad?
Yeah.
Your access point? Come out Lakeland and then go across that way?
So unfortunately, this is the point at which we need to connect into the Imran system, so we're kind of limited to the southwest portion. That's the reason why it is a little funny the way it's jutting up over here. But that's where we were instructed to connect.
But are you instructed to connect there because you didn't have an expanded operation four years ago? Because you only had about half what you have now? And is that just that it was closer there? Because do they have three-phase at Lakeland and North Main?
No, they do not. That's what we've been told, at least up to this point. And so unfortunately, that original design still stands and is most effective, most cost and time.
Okay, how far north on North Main Street do they have three-phase?
I am not entirely sure how far that stretches.
Because I guess I'm wondering why you wouldn't then just come farther north where the old farmhouse is or was there and come across that way to connect. And I guess the other question is, is why do you have to go overhead? Why can't you go underground and then come up to their three-phase pole?
Yeah, I know that's been discussed in the past. That is really, I guess, several aspects there. Everything along that street right now is overheads. We're kind of matching existing conditions. But really, ultimately, it's a big cost item. So that...
Well, you're going underground a quarter of a mile. It would seem like just going another couple hundred feet wouldn't be much when you talk about expensive. Because it's a quarter mile from Main Street to where the property is. So you only have to cross Main Street to get to theirs. I don't see how that could be a major expense when you're already going a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, something we can definitely consider. That's a good point.
Okay, so when you say consider, then that means you won't start the project till you come back and tell us that's what you're doing?
There is just other items to figure out in order to accommodate that and make sure it makes sense. So certainly open to pursuing that makes sense.
How many, under this plan right here, how many new poles are you putting up there?
So there's six total poles there, thirty-foot on center separated from another.
Six new poles?
Six new poles.
I do have this. This is the presentation you sent me.
Ah, yes.
If you want to pass around what that looks like.
So that is an example from a project in New York, kind of give you an idea of what that might look like. Obviously, we're a little bit more set off, setback from the roadway there, but that is just a good visual.
Steve. There is three-phase, a quarter mile straight north of Lakeland. That's where ours came across from west to east. So I know there's three-phase, a quarter mile, or no, no.
It runs north of...
It'd be half main. It'd be half mark.
And does it, it doesn't follow the road? Does it go through farmland?
No, it goes... It goes from North Main over to Lakeland right in front of Weidman's house. Down their lane across.
So it's interesting, because if you have three-phase at that far north of Main Street, it would seem like you have access to that as well.
But that goes...
Different direction.
That doesn't come to Morton. That cuts across to the west.
Well, they just have to get it to Imran. Doesn't matter where it goes. Can you also check on that? Because it, I mean, my desire would be, if you're going to do something, you have to, it's either go underground or go up the railroad tracks to Lakeland and get to Imran's three-phase.
Yeah, agreed. If that's available and that makes sense, we're certainly open to it.
So you said there are six poles thirty feet apart?
Yep.
Any other questions, Ryan? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Could I do that for you? This, I'm seeing has the poles coming back into the property. Like is it, granted, this has access road there. You're saying the poles would be aligned with, okay, yes, aligned with that, okay.
Yep. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
The consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting, February twenty-first. Oh, yeah. All right, let's go to public comment first. Anybody like to make a comment?
Good evening, thank you all. Joel Dickerson with the Morton Park District. I wanted to just take a quick chance to come in and speak with you all as we're getting ready to really get into the planning for the Fourth of July, the community event. Really excited about it this year. We really appreciate everything that you guys did last year to help us get it up and running. We're not asking for any changes to layout or overall functioning of the event. We felt like it went really well last year. We got a lot of positive feedback and just wanted to share that with you. The one thing that I did want to share with you is obviously across all sectors, there are significant price increases and one of those being shipping, which is coming from China. And of course, that's where our fireworks come from. Our fireworks manufacturer that we've been working with for the last twenty-some years went out of business this year. They were purchased by another company in Iowa. So we'll be working with a new vendor this year, but they will be using all of the same employees and technicians that they've used in the past. So they actually hired all of the ones that we're used to working with, so we're excited about that. But it's looking like there's about a twenty percent increase across the board on fireworks. So as soon as I get quotes for those, I know in the past, we've, the Park District and the village have worked together on the expenses for the fireworks. So I should have those numbers to you very soon. They just finished all the legal aspects of merging these two companies. So I should have that for you very soon. But I just wanted to come in and say thank you all again for last year. We've met with the VFW. I've met with Chief Miller to talk through the event, and we're excited for it. We are moving it back to July third. That was one of the requests that we had from you all specifically, and we're happy to do that. And we think it'll be a good move going back to the third, moving forward. We've still not heard if any surrounding communities who canceled their shows last year are planning on having them. Peoria's not made an announcement yet. So that's the big one that we're waiting to hear from. But we're excited to do it. And just want to share a couple other events that we've got coming up that are big draws to the community. We were awarded the 2022 Combined World Championships for Disc Golf again this year. So we'll be hosting that in July. It'll be the weekend after, the weekend that follows Fourth of July. I believe it's the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth. So we'll have somewhere in the area of about three thousand players coming from around the world. This year, we are excited to have the juniors. So instead of the professional circuit, we've got the juniors, which is under eighteen, World Championships. They bring their families with them, which is very exciting for the community, as well as the Masters Division. So we'll have the Masters and Juniors World Championships going on at the same time here in town. We were also awarded this year the Illinois State Amateur Championships. So they decided to bring that show down here to Morton as well. So we're very excited for those events and continue to showcase the properties that we've got and drive traffic to town. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Is this any of all public comments?
Yep. Yep. Go right up to the podium.
So my name is John Crawford. I live at two-five-six-nine-one Harding Road, and I also own a house next door at two-five-six-five-nine Harding Road. And I'm here about the proposed thirty-nine-foot special use for the apartments across the street. I'm not totally opposed to the whole program, and I don't know if it's a misunderstanding on my part or if it's just something that's metamorphosed. But my understanding was, in the beginning, it was going to be thirty-six or thirty-eight townhome-type units. And that has gone away, and now it's turned into apartments. And I'm still not totally opposed. But frankly, the three apartments that they've already constructed on Harding Road, they allowed the thirty-nine foot, and I somehow missed that meeting entirely, or I probably would have spoken then. That's water gone down the drain. Frankly, I don't know how many of you people have driven by that, but the building closest to Harding Road is, in my estimation, some sort of an abomination because it practically blocks out the sun. They put it so close to the property line, I would say that it's not in the proper perspective for the property. Got it, got it. And again, I'm not opposed to the R4 and the apartments or the townhomes, either one. I do have a bit of an issue with a thirty-nine-foot height. And I'm also concerned about, and I don't know if this is even right for them to bring this up, but the density of people that are going to be on a third of a mile or half-mile stretch of Harding Road, it's all I've got. So I'm not, I'm here to say that I'm against the thirty-nine-foot thing, although I have spoken to Mr. Lehman, and he does have some ideas that I'm not opposed to. I just, I'm struggling with the thirty-nine-foot thing. We've got three of them there now, and it does not, in my estimation, look good. And I was at the meeting last Monday. If the village has an ordinance that says thirty-nine feet's not allowable, then it would seem to me that we would either say no or we would amend the ordinance to allow thirty-nine feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks, Tony. Thanks for the opportunity to share. I gave you a handout so you could refer to the, it helps to visualize a little bit because I did have some good conversations with the neighbors. I think that was beneficial for everyone. But I think it actually played, I think it's hard sometimes for someone to understand some of the background on it. But I think the ordinance to do, to limit it to two and a half stories plus thirty-five foot just occurred a year, year and a half ago. And I think the point probably was so that you do, as a Board of Trustees, have more control over where you do a three-story within the town. So knowing that this is contiguous and adjacent to the attached lots that are already that thirty-nine-feet height and three-story, I'm simply asking for that to apply to these lots that are also attached to it. There are some benefits to doing that. Basically, the current allows us to go to thirty-five feet. I'm just asking for four extra feet of height to match the neighbors. It actually matches the neighbors across the street as well as north of us if we can get this approval. But also getting that extra four feet of height actually reduces the footprint of the buildings by about close to forty thousand square feet. So to allow four feet extra height also allows us to have forty-five thousand square feet of additional green space. And I think that's a really good trade-off. I think that's good for the village. I think it's good for the location. I even think it's good for the Crawfords and those who are neighbors to the property because it allows us to do more screening as well as more lawn area to actually move the buildings further away from the property line and have some good natural landscaping that's professionally maintained. So this, I think, actually helps everyone out. Also, with our conceptual plan, we have turned the buildings to where they're not long ways against the road. But they actually, the short side of the building faces the street, so that also takes care of some of the concerns that were brought up from before. So we've had good planning exercises and good conversations with the neighbors. So it's all been good stuff and lots of benefits to the community as far as job growth as well as housing to support businesses in our community, as well as contributing to the tax revenue, the property tax revenue to support the government, the school system and all of that. So I just ask for your support on this, and I think it makes a lot of sense to me. But ultimately, you will decide, and I appreciate the opportunity. I'm also open to questions.
Can I ask you a question? Okay, at the facility that you have just to the north?
Yes.
I assume that's like six-sixty-one Harding?
Right.
It seems like there's still a area where another building could go?
There is, yeah, there is some space where another building could go on that property. Right now, we're using it as green space, community space for the existing facility. So we are trying to, and we learn as we go, the length of the buildings that are currently there, we would prefer to actually have shorter lengths and have more green space between the buildings. I think it just adds for, it creates a better atmosphere. And so this request allows us to do that. It allows us to have buildings that are not as long and have greenery and trees and landscaping between them. So, yeah.
So then I'd like to ask counsel, since we approved the thirty-nine-foot height on that lot through special use before, he, does he need to ask again?
We, so there wasn't a special use granted on that site. That was permitted before the height was reduced from forty-five to thirty-five feet.
All right. Does he have the ability to build another thirty-nine-foot building there without coming through special use?
I'd have to inquire as to status of permitting. If he was issued permit for construction previously, yes. And I can work with staff on that. It would just depend on details reflected in the permitting that I don't have available right this second.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Anyone else have a question? Bring it up here in a little bit.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Anyone else have a comment?
Good evening, everyone. Chad Bell. I own Blue Jays Learning Center, which will be neighbors to Mr. Lehman's buildings. We think that the buildings that are there now look pretty good, and we support his petition to continue the thirty-nine-feet, three-story buildings over behind where our building is. We think it looks pretty good. We're excited about the landscaping and the greenery space and the new neighbors, the business that it could bring to us and the local businesses around us. It would look better than the dirt piles that are behind us right now. We're really excited to have some neighbors back there. So I just wanted to step up here for a minute and say that us at Blue Jays Learning Center are neighbors. We support that petition request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? All right. Consent agenda tonight is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting, February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and the approval of the bills. If we can have a motion?
That move to approve.
Second.
Any comments? If not, call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have nothing tonight except to congratulate the girls' basketball team on another fine season, third place in state. They keep making it there. It's amazing. So definitely putting Morton on the map for girls' basketball. Congratulations. Village clerk?
I would just like to thank Lincoln School and their fifth graders and the staff over there for having Mayor Kaufman and I come speak to their fifth graders in social studies for an introduction in government. They invited us to speak today, and they had a couple of projects that they went over about how to make changes in your community and how government works. So they invited Mayor Kaufman and I to come, you know, be one of the first forms of government that is explained to them and seen.
If you're wondering, Nate, he talked as much as I did.
We split time very well. I think they got one question.
All right, village administrator?
Nothing tonight, John.
All right, chief of police?
One item tonight, Your Honor. It's a resolution approving a intergovernmental agreement between the county of Tazewell and the village of Morton.
If we could have a motion?
Second.
If you'd like to make a comment on that?
Yeah, this agreement is basically for the full-time use of the Tazewell County Animal Control Services. They have gotten a new director that just took over in late last fall. She contacted me at the beginning of the year, sat down, just looked at all the services that they provided, and it just seemed to make a lot of sense for us to go with them full-time. And looking at it, we were the only municipality in Tazewell County that doesn't utilize them full-time. And so just with the amount of services that they provide, frees up time for our officers that they don't have to handle some of these calls that are kind of out of the ordinary, bat calls, wild animal calls, even domesticated animal calls. So that's kind of how we came to bring it to the table for tonight's discussion. I don't think I take any more questions too.
I didn't know we answered bat calls. I thought it shipped all in. I learned something today.
Well, actually, I'm happy to hear this. Didn't know it was on the agenda, but I know of someone very close in my family that needs such services the day before Christmas and found out that Morton was not, did not have the contract with the animal control for a bat and went through a series of shots because of it because not not being able to get the bat tested. So I think this is a very positive development.
I would agree. I think it's time.
I have a question for you, chief.
Yes.
In addition to freeing up time for the officers, would you say that there'd be more humane treatment for the animals when they're addressed?
I do think that, Libby Aschman is the new director. And so in talking with her, they do a lot of correspondence with what they would call negligent pet owners. And so, yeah, I think that they do a lot more follow-up. And I think that it would just overall be a better all service, you know, provided to the citizens for them doing it. They take care of neighbor complaints. You know, if there's complaint of, you know, somebody who's not picking up their feces, animal feces in the yards, they take care of those. They follow up on those and those types of situations where I think sometimes when it comes to the police standpoint, we handle with it directly, but there's not a lot of follow-up necessarily months, weeks down the road, so.
What is the fee for these services?
The initial contract is for, the one-year service is, it's thirteen thousand, but where did the exact?
Thirteen thousand, two ninety-eight, seventy-six cents.
There you go. There you go. I do, there is a chance that those will go up going forward, but that is the introductory rate that they're doing now. I know they're basically looking to kind of revamp some of the billing going forward, but that's the rate for this year, which would be May to April thirty-one, so.
In addition, it'll also, in my time here, in the seven years I've been here, we've had two officers get bit by dogs when they go out to try to corral them. So it'll reduce that work comp liability. It'll also reduce our liability housing animals and transporting them, so besides the bats, I think there's, you know, cost savings in that part and keep the officers on the street rather than dealing with animals, so.
So Chief, one last question about it. Are we going to use Tazewell County's ordinance or are we gonna utilize ours?
From talking to Libby, we can do either or. It's kind of the board's choice how we want to go forward with that, and she was willing to do either or, so.
But if we follow Tazewell County, citizens of Morton don't have to pay the same rate of those who aren't covered by the agreement or whatever for the rabies tags, I think it is. So there is some benefit to the citizens based on at least what the Tazewell County ordinance says.
And she said we could even do a mixture of Tazewell and Morton? So I mean, yeah, we can definitely set that up however we want.
I would hate to have to have our village attorney have to read that whole document because it was boring. But it seemed very thorough, but there was a benefit to citizens of Morton if we have the service and utilize their ordinance. Fees for some of the services are a little less. I think it's like twenty-five dollars for a rabies tag if you're not in the village. I mean, if you're not a member, it might be thirty-five and goes down to like twelve dollars or something. So there is an advantage for the citizens that should get a rate on the rate that they pay for rabies tag. I'm more.
Just to touch too, one of the additional things that we got in the contract is that they will send us a picture of, you know, if there's a lost dog that they pick up. So we can still put that on our Facebook page. I know that's one of the big things that we've always done to help try and locate those animals and I'll continue to go forward like that as well, so.
So are we recommending the Tazewell County ordinance?
I don't think that needs to be reflected in your motion. I think that can be handled on a straight basis in coordination with their director.
All right. Any more comments? Not, call the roll.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anything else tonight?
Looking at us, sir.
Okay, thanks. Corporation counsel?
I have one item tonight, Your Honor, and that is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Morton Park District and the village of Morton.
I want you to approve. Second.
Yeah, this matter has come before you once before. This is for transfer of the old Ameren lot, which was a scale house or Schultz Landscaping property at Washington and Fourth. You previously approved to transfer this property to the Morton Park District. At that meeting, a question was, arose as to whether we needed additional right-of-way around the perimeter of that lot. So we had some surveying done, that reserved or held back some additional right-of-way. So the legal description for the property we're conveying to the Park District has changed, and otherwise the terms of the agreement remain the same, but since the legal description changed, it needs to come back to you for new action. So by approving this tonight, you would be essentially rendering null and void your prior approval and instead of indicating new approval of the kind of reduced property so that we have the initial right-of-way we needed through that corner.
And if you remember, this property didn't cost us nothing. When Ameren went down through Morton, they turned on Fourth Street. They bought this property to do work and then they donated it to us and we agreed to donate it to the Park District and they can make a neighborhood park or whatever they want to do with it there. So that's how we're doing it. So any other comments? Call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Joel, the Park District has a new park. We look forward to your improvements. Director of Fire Emergencies isn't here tonight. Director of Public Works?
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First, I'd like to announce the spring two thousand twenty-two yard waste disposal program. We'll open that up Monday, April fourth. It'll run through Sunday, May first. Assuming you guys are good with that, that's the same as it's been for many years, eight to six P.M. And it will be closed from Good Friday through Easter. Questions on that?
I think that'll be our twenty-sixth year, I believe. Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Quite a few years.
All right?
All right. Next item, I got several items here, but I'll read them individually. First, I'd like to ask for permission to request bids for the Main Street lighting improvements project.
Want to do them all at the same or individually?
Well, I'd like to do this one separate, just I think it's a little different than the other ones.
All right.
So move. Second.
Yeah, just real quick, this is the one I got permission to design. This would be new streetlights, thirteen of them from the interstate towards Cortland on the east side of the road. So we're prepared to put those out for bid. Prior, once we receive bids, then we'll come back to you for approval of that, but with your approval, we would go out for bid. The bid opening would be March twenty-ninth at ten o'clock. I'd answer any questions.
What is your cost estimate for that project?
We're about two hundred and fifty thousand for construction.
This would be business district funds that this used.
There are forty-foot tall poles that are farther apart than originally, and there's gonna be, looking at the print, I think there's two in the south of Harding or just one. I think there's just one. One, and then they go up, and then there's the one at Main Street and Cortland that's on Main Street right near Cortland. That one's getting replaced, so all these will match. And they'll match then the ones that are on Cortland, but they're forty-foot high, so they're spread farther apart.
They're right on the backside of the ditch, but there's a note in there for us to, you know, to give the final okay just to the amount of utilities in there. So we'll want to keep them still uniform. We'll look at that, you know, once the utilities are marked, just to verify again.
Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
Mennel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll read the next three together, if that's okay. They're all intertwined together, so prefer they go together. First is permission to request bids for the annual mill and overlay project. Next would be the permission to bid the annual seal coating project, and lastly, permission to request bids for the annual miscellaneous concrete project.
So if we have consensus to go ahead with these, we really don't need to vote on them? So if there's any objection, we'll go out for bid for those?
Do you have a question? The fog code on the ABC Street?
Yep.
That was overlay nineteen, I think?
I believe so, yes. Yep.
Is that kind of a new?
We would like to give that a try.
Okay.
Yes.
Try to preserve.
See how that works.
Primary preservation.
Yep.
Preservation.
Yeah. So with your approval, we definitely like to try.
If anybody has any objection, we'll go ahead and bid those three out. Are any other questions? All right, let's move on down.
All right, F, this is a resolution approving a third amendment to the waste collection agreement.
So move. Second.
Did you explain?
Yeah, this change, and Pat, please jump in if I'm missing something, but basically with our agreements with Area Disposal or PDC, there was a five-thousand-dollar annual franchise fee. With the recent sale, part of that agreement, we had ten thousand dollars in laboratory services to the wastewater department through PDC. With their sale, PDC's staying separate, so their proposal to us was to increase the annual fee to fifteen thousand so it was easier to get us the money and then not have to bill PDC and involve another party. So I think what we have here doesn't really change anything going forward other than when the money comes in, where it goes.
Just question in regards to the agreement, what is the term of that agreement?
Trying not to speak and miss something. I've looked at it a hundred times, but I think it's two thousand twenty-seven, I believe. It might be quicker than that. We added on a couple of years for the hazardous waste. Pat's looking it up.
I'm not sure if it's that long yet.
It may not be that long, but Pat's looking it up.
I know it went for a few years, and then we have three one-year agreements, but those two years might have been added.
And there were fixed cost adjustments for all those years?
That's correct.
Is it, do you recall, is it a fixed percentage each year or?
It's pretty close to that. I know, I mean, it's in the contract, it's specific dollar amounts, but I believe those were specific increases towards the end, yes. But we just put the actual dollars and cents in there.
But I believe we have the cheapest rate of all the communities around.
So we're protected for a few more years?
Yes.
We'll be negotiating the new company.
They're not gonna want a fuel adjustment on them. Maybe we could negotiate and have them change their dumpsters back to ground.
Yeah, the dumpster cow dumped it.
Where do they stick out?
We'll put landscaping in the contract. So any other comments? Call the roll.
Mennel?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Zoning and code enforcement, Brad?
I have several items tonight, Your Honor. First item is petition number twenty-two dash zero-one, a zoning amendment.
You have a motion?
So move. Second.
You want to explain, Brad?
Sure. So this, so in your packet you received, on this zoning amendment, there's a list of twenty-six parcels that the village is proposing to change the zoning. Just to give you a little history, this last year, there was a special use request on North First Avenue, and there, it was denied, and there were some concerns after we started looking at the zoning on First Avenue between Jefferson and Jackson. Everything on that street is zoned, either B one or B two. Working with trustee Hilliard, which is over zoning it now, and also with the director of public works, Craig Loudermilk, we started to look through all those parcels. In a nutshell, we feel like there's three parcels that are actually being used as a business. The rest are being used as residential, so we're just trying to get this back to more of conforming parcels to the zoning as opposed to all the non-conforming. When we brought this to the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission did give a favorable recommendation with one change to it, and that change was for three thirteen North First Avenue. The recommendation came for that to go from B two to B one as opposed we were proposing B two to R one.
If I can speak on procedural matter, the motion in the second would be to approve the zoning amendment as per the petition. So the recommendation is, as Brad suggested, would be to not approve that from the Plan Commission, the recommendation is to exclude one property from that rezoning or a change of rezoning for that. So if a trustee were to so desire, if he wanted to place the question before the board about, that would align with the recommendation of the Plan Commission, you need a motion in a second to amend what's on the floor. Otherwise, if you were to, there would be no motion to amend it. What you'd be voting on is the rezoning as proposed or as requested in the zoning amendment.
With the only three new mortgages?
Exactly the way it was proposed. So the property that the Plan Commission recommended you do not rezone to residential, the motion before you right now would have that property rezoned residential, not leave it in business.
I'm still confused.
So this doesn't happen to, I'll restate and then I'll let you question me. We don't have the circumstance come up too often where the Plan Commission makes essentially a line item veto of one of your requested or a requested rezoning. So there was a slate put forward on a zoning application. The matter on the agenda and therefore the motion to approve is to approve all of the requesting, all the rezonings that were requested in the application. So yes to the entire slate. The Plan Commission has said, take one property off that. We recommend that you don't rezone.
Three thirteen.
Three thirteen, excuse me. So their recommendation is don't rezone three thirteen. So the action, the motion in the second, put on the table the question of rezoning every property. So approving the slate. That, so that would include the three, essentially all the properties, but the three going to residential and the three that are existing businesses staying business but going to the more restrictive zoning classification for business. So if you, if there would be no further action and you were to go to a vote, you'd be approving the entire slate of rezonings. If a trustee wanted the exact recommendation made by the Plan Commission to go to a vote, there needs to be a motion in the second to amend the motion and that'd be to approve, ask for the recommendation of the Plan Commission. So I wanted to go clear what the motion was for and what it didn't cover. That make sense?
That makes sense now. So if we wanted to do something different with three thirteen, which was the one property that I think the owners spoke to at the Plan and Commission, we would have to make an amendment.
Yes.
And right now, it's moved from B two to R one.
Yes.
And everything else, we're moving B two to R, B two to B one. Or the three that we're keeping B, we're moving from B two to B one.
That's correct.
So if we have that, Chris, you have it?
Could I add just a little bit? When we were, had the daycare come to us and we voted that down and we realized this really wasn't suitable for that area, we reviewed and said, hey, we've got a problem with the zoning. Everything is zoned B two, everything, including the homes that the people lived in that were as residences. And so they were listed as non-conforming, B two non-conforming. So as we looked at the neighborhood, not just driving down the street, but actually looked at, this is a residential neighborhood. It really needs to be R one. So we thought, let's just flip it, rezone everything to R one with the businesses that were operating, the nail salon, well, the nail salon wasn't there, but the hair salons, and put them R one, non-conforming. And the Plan and Commission really didn't like that. They didn't like the idea of doing that, so we listened to what they said and we went back and looked at and said, well, you know what? The nail salon, which was coming in, we waited till it came in, and the two hair salons, they really fall under B one, under the section of B one. In addition to the eight items under B one, for B two, there are forty-five additionals and there's businesses there that just don't fit with that area. And so we listened to the Planning Commission, we went back, and we recommended to them to make the three businesses, the two hair salons and the nail salon, from B two to B one, and everything else to R one. The homeowner at three thirteen had exception and of changing the zoning from that parcel from B two. Wanted to remain B two. And I think if I remember correctly, the business in which it had been previous to the impertinent was a worm farm, which falls under B three, and it wouldn't even be able to go under what they were wanting. The residence in her statement has resided there for thirty years and has yet to attempt to establish a business. And so I would continue to support zoning, rezoning that to R one.
Just clarifying, supplementing or clarifying, the owner of three thirteen does not live at three thirteen. Three thirteen is vacant or used solely for the storage of personal property, so they reside elsewhere.
Any other comments, questions? If not, call the roll.
Parrot?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brad?
Next item tonight, Your Honor, is petition number twenty-two dash zero-two, special use.
Do you have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Did you explain, Brad?
Yes, this is a special use request at six- Yes, this is a special use request at 641 and 651 Harding Road. This would allow for buildings to be 39 feet tall. The permitted use in the R4 is 35 feet tall.
Any comments?
Well, I will just start off that, after seeing the three units that are out there, I, I believe that what's being proposed here on these additional lots is rather overwhelming and imposing, particularly on the property across the street. And I do not think it would be appropriate to approve this special use to allow the increased height. I think something in the neighborhood of a two-story unit, at least, at least along Harding Road would be more appropriate.
I, I agree with trustee Newman. I, I think when the board first approved the, the three-story, there wasn't a special use at that time, and I would, I, I am speculating that part of the reason for the special use and changing was because of those buildings. May or may not be, but I agree that, as you look at them, that they're overwhelming. There is the potential of a, of a fourth one to go up on the site that the, the other three and the common building is. I think that's too much. I, I understand that it was approved previously, but I, I think it's too much on, on the height. And, you know, the two is what's in it, and I think that's.
Any other comments?
I would, I would have to concur. I, I think that the, the height out there now, and I realize that the new, new buildings would match the height that's out there now, and I understand the argument for that, but I don't think it fits with the surrounding area out there. I think it looks kind of tall and out of place at that height. And granted, 35 feet's not that much more, but it's, it's, you know, two and a half, the two and a half story versus the three, I think it makes a difference.
I think you're making a big deal out of four feet. I think it would look better if they're all the same, rather than shorter, so.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Newman?
No.
Mendel?
Yes.
Parrot?
No.
Leach?
No.
Blunier?
No.
Hilliard?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item tonight, Your Honor, is petition number 22-03, a special use request.
Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Your Honor, this is a special use request at 700 South Fourth Avenue that would permit a private school kindergarten through sixth grade.
Any comments or questions?
I just make a comment that I think this is a very good use of that property. And I'm really glad to see parents taking more ownership and educating their children in this kind of environment. And I think it's, again, very good use of that property, and wishing the best.
I agree with trustee Newman again, that this is a good location for this. Ms. Lehman made a presentation to Planning Commission. I thought she did an outstanding job with that, with plans that they have to do it. I, I, again, wish them all the best.
Just hope they outgrow this.
I think it's a perfect fit. I commend you for taking it on. It's a great, it's a win-win for everybody.
All right, if no other comments, call the roll.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We welcome the new school of Morton.
Next item tonight, Your Honor, it's an ordinance making amendments to Section 10-15-12 of the Morton Municipal Code regarding the mixed-use overlay district map.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
So in your packet, there is a map. So what this does, this just reflects the approved zoning amendment for 22-01ZA. Now that the, those parcels have been rezoned, this would reflect that on the mixed-use zoning map.
Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Mendel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, just one more item. I just want to let everybody know that the updated maps, the official map, zoning map, land use, land use map from last year, it's all been updated. It's now on the village website, you can see. So all the new special uses, all the rezoning, everything would be reflected on those maps.
Thank you.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
All right, Village Trustee, trustee Leach?
Yes, one item tonight, Your Honor, maybe two. Two weeks ago, when we met, we talked about the investment in software from Civic Systems. We approved the purchase of the business tax collection, which is their standard package, and then the stuff that they would create to us, and allow the, filling out the report, and then allow us to then automatically withdraw money from their account to pay for taxes. That would be for the hotel motel. And then there was the setup of a charge of $1,800, and so a total of $5,300. Julie discussed or called or emailed Civic Systems. The one thing that wasn't included, though, was the actual emailing of utility bills. And so I handed that out, I think you got it in as an email, but I handed that out to you as well, paper form. And so I would make a motion that we approved the $2,000 investment in emailing of utility bills. If there want, if you need more discussion about, if you would like to change your vote on the original one, I'll let Village Attorney McGrath talk to you about that. But I'm making a motion to spend the $2,000 as a show.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second, so discuss it there.
So, if I can address a procedural issue, essentially, when you voted on the other, the proposal that was presented at the last meeting, you had an understanding of what was included, and so the new information presented tonight indicates that there's additional services, additional charge for some of the services you believe were included in the last agreement. So I, the, the motion before you is to approve a second agreement with the software system. If the additional cost in the, for the services you expected leaves your trustee wanting to revisit the entire discussion, what I would suggest is you would vote no on the motion that's before you, and then the next agenda item, you could make a motion to reconsider the acceptance of the prior quote for the tax reporting and collection, then bringing back on the table the matter which you approved at the last meeting. So if, if the motion before you is approved, it would essentially indicate total approval of both what was presented at the last meeting and what's before you tonight. If you vote no to what's in front of you, then make a motion to reconsider. You'd have the opportunity to vote down what you approved last month.
That was two weeks ago.
Last month.
What, what did we approve? We approved, there is the business tax collection software that Civic Systems has. It's a standard package that you can get. It allows you to, licensing, basically, collections for licensing, which would include our hotel motel, but it would also include the ability to bill and invoice and collect for our liquor license, licenses that we have as well. And then, I'm not sure what other, what other licenses we would be allowed ever in the future to create since we're not home more. But if there was any other license, and I don't know that we have, do we have plumbing license and electrician licenses?
I will comment, though, the business licenses is on this page. This front page is just the, the tax collection. Before we go down this road.
Does this deal with liquor licenses?
The second page, the additional fee, the optional product description, business licenses. This is the liquor licenses or any other types of licenses.
Okay, so what did, your explanation then that you gave me, what is the standard package? Business tax collection?
This is just.
For taxes?
Hotel motel taxes, or any other type of tax, but that's the only one we actually can impose.
Last meeting, we approved for two different, two different packages, were they not? One was for utility billing.
Right.
And the other one was for the hotel motel.
Because I thought they were both included in this, because this is the only quote that they gave.
In this form?
The, the original quote that I gave you two weeks ago, which was for $2,500 for the standard package, $1,000 for the auto posting, and $1,800 for training. And so it was a total of $5,300. I thought that included the emailing, the utility emailing of invoices, okay?
For the utility bills.
Correct, right.
So this would be $2,000 in addition.
Correct.
To be able to email the utility.
So this would just be what Julie just said is, is $2,500 for collecting hotel motel taxes, which would include the hotels we already receive money from. They fill out a report, you know, they photocopy it, they send it in and send the check. But the idea that I had was also then to include for the BMBs, that we would have, that they'd be able to do the same thing. But, we can give them a copy of the report, and they can fill it out and mail it in.
So is that an additional $2,500 on top of this $2,000?
Correct.
So right, right now, let me get this straight. Two weeks ago, we approved $5,300 on an 875 annual that just, as we discover now, just covers the seven hotels that we have for the hotel motel tax.
And, right, and the eight or so BMBs.
But we don't know who the eight BMBs are.
Yes, we do.
We do?
We do.
We know them all?
We know them all. We have it all documented.
And there could be more that we don't know.
There could be more, but so far, we found eight.
I thought that $5,300 was for the utility bill.
So did. I'll admit, so did, because this is the only quote that we got.
It wasn't clear.
And so, what I, what I explained to them in Zoom meeting, when Julie followed up with them, they didn't send us the quote for the email of the utility bill. And that's why I'm bringing it, I have both items here, because I don't want you to assume the wrong thing. If you'd like to change your vote, I don't have a problem with that. I would still recommend going with both, but if you want to change your vote, that's fine with me, so.
But the hotel motel tax can pay the $5,300?
I know it can pay it, but the question is, is it a good use of that money? And from what I'm, I mean, again, we have, what, seven? And it's, seems like it's not very time-consuming right now, from what I read from your panel, Julie.
The hotels are very well-trained. The bed and breakfasts, I'm not sure what type of, you know, whether we would get a.
And if we got serious about the bed and breakfast on the road, and it became a greater number, I could see maybe considering doing something at that point. The utility, the utility billing portion of what I thought we were doing, I was in agree, wholehearted agreement at that point.
Right.
I went along on the.
I understand.
Other one.
Right.
But I guess at this point, I would suggest maybe we back out of this whole thing and start all over again with all the information next time around? I don't know, that's what I'd suggest. I don't know how we get there. Maybe vote this down first, and then, and then, I guess.
You could vote the $5,300, and then you could come back and vote the $2,000 up.
So, if, the clarification on how these interrelate, can the $2,000 be approved as an independent standalone package?
Yes.
Okay, so, what's before you is spending $2,000 for utility billing. So, emailing utility billing, so that's the yay or nay vote. We're going to next have before you the ability to reopen the business tax reporting which you approved at last meeting. So, a yay for this vote is to approve spending $2,000 for the email of utility billing, and a no is to vote that, vote that.
That's $2,000 in addition to the five.
Then I would make a motion, if you approve the $2,000, then I would make a motion, I'll let actually Pat say how to say it, but it would be to bring back up what we voted on two weeks ago. And so if you would like to change your mind, you can just turn it down. Okay?
So?
I'm, I'm not done yet. I have some inquiries, or comments, or whatever. What we voted on two weeks ago, if I remember right, that included giving a dollar off for those individuals that did utility billing, and also, they got the utility bill emailed, and also chose to pay it via debit checking. Is that, is that accurate?
Only partially, because we would have to come back with an ordinance change to add that deduct. So, to buy the software is one, but then, once we get it, then there would be that ordinance change, because we would have to put that into our code book to give that deduct.
So you got a couple weeks to think about that?
Right, okay, well, I'm, I, I've thought about it, and I've got some figures written down, and I don't think it's necessarily as good as a deal. And, you know, in looking at the, some of the information that Julie sent, we've got 5,600 bills. And talking with the staff, they put about five hours of work in a month to do those 5,600 mailings, and given a figure of $30 an hour, that comes up to $150. If I take the 5,600, and I multiply 67 cents, what we've got in material, I come up with 3,752, plus my 150, is $3,902 that costs us a month to do this. If, if I take the 3,902, and I add to it, and if you look on Julie's email, if you've got that, $2,175. And I got that because we have 2,175 payments, which are manually, manually processed. The staff hours takes about one to two minutes, so I went on the two minutes. And at $30 an hour, that's a dollar, so it come up with $2,175. That puts me at $6,077. If I go back to the 5,600, which is what we have mailing out, and we give each of them a dollar, that's $5,600. Now, if I take that, and I have an annual increase of 400 bucks, I'm at six grand. Right now, I'm saving like 77 bucks. But, we've got 1,400 people that are using the PSN that we pay nothing for. Those people may all chose to, choose to get emailed and get a dollar off. Now we're up to $7,400. And I, I would speculate that that $400 annually isn't $400 annually for 10 years. There's going to be an increase. And so I, I just don't know that that's, that's cost beneficial to us, and.
Well, those are two different things that I would say, because if you look at it, and that's why it would have to be an ordinance change.
Right.
We don't have to do that.
I, 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 I know what.
Right.
I went off of that, and.
Right. And the other thing I would say is, is from my perspective, I would say that our customers should have the right to choose if they want to get an email. If we could get more of them to sign up for email and, you know, auto pay, you know, the better it is for us. And those would be the only ones that would get, you know, a deduct.
Well, right now, we have, we have several that are using the PSN, and I think Julie's got documentation which would show that since 2020, or since more likely, as a result of the pandemic, we've seen an increase of the individuals paying through the PSN. result of the pandemic, we've seen an increase of the individuals paying through the PSN. But again, if you look at, at some of her email, it's, you know, there's a cost to us, whether it's credit card or whether I, they get online and, and do it or they actually talk to somebody, somebody on the phone. And, and that, that cost, whether it's 55 cents, 80 cents, or a dollar 55, is tough to cover because the person may do it different every time.
And I'm not counting those, the ones that are credit card, I'm not counting those. It's only the ones that we do in ETF.
I, I got that. I got that, but.
But that's a different item.
But right now, it's tough to say, so. I would, I would like to have the company come and do a presentation to us and we can all sort of ask them questions and, and have them explain what this exactly is and.
Did you, did you say that it takes five hours total per month to send out the utility bills?
That's the approximation of what they.
Five man-hours?
By the time we print them all and then we run them through a machine that folds and puts the envelopes in, does all that.
One person working five hours doing that?
Probably straight, yes.
One?
And it's off and on, is, you're talking to the, they'll go load up the machine.
As clarification, that's pretty efficient.
And there's some manual to that because you'll have landlords that get 10 bills.
Sure.
We manually do all those by hand, so that actually increases that amount. The machine, if it's working well, and Jeff has witnessed when it isn't working well, makes that job really pretty simple. Cause it folds it, puts it in the envelope, puts the return envelope and everything in it, seals it, and all we do is put it, well, all, we keep it in.
Which, which you could save all those return envelopes too.
Correct.
I would have traded that machine in a couple of hours.
It sounds pretty efficient, five hours.
Well, you, you load the machine and you walk back to your desk and do something and it runs till it runs out of paper and then you load the machine, you know.
So gentlemen, what would you like to do? We have a motion on the floor for spending $2,000 for emails of utility bills.
You have a second as well.
And a second, so if no more comments, we're going to call the roll. Okay? All right, call the roll.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
No.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so then the second one, I'm going to let Pat explain my motion.
It'd be a motion to reconsider your approval at the last meeting of the quote for business tax reporting and collection software.
I move that. I'll second that.
Okay, any other questions? We all know what we're voting on.
So just reconsider, as I always like to say.
Undoing it.
An affirmative puts it back on the table. You're going to have to take a second vote to undo it, but by, by saying yes, you're putting back before you the question of whether to approve that software. So if you want to vote down the business license software, you need to vote in the affirmative on this motion.
Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
No.
Motion carries.
Now you have before you the action, uh, to approve or disapprove.
I move the approval of the, uh, business tax collection and auto posting for hotel motel.
So I don't think we need a new motion to reconsider, puts the question back before you. So it'd be a discussion or vote.
Okay, sorry.
Does anyone have anything to say? We're going to call the roll. So we're revoting on the 5,300 dollars in the tourism hotel motel. Okay, everybody got it? All right, call the roll.
Hilliard.
No.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
No.
Newman.
No.
Parrott.
No.
Blunear.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Thanks for your patience.
Uh, does any of the other trustees have anything to say?
I just have one item, just to jump on your back. I'd like to do a shout out to the Morton Lady Potters. Uh, they have, uh, established them as a, a major powerhouse, making it to state, uh, seven of the last 10 years. And I will add that one of those years, there was no state tournament. And, um, with that, I'd like to also send a shout out to all the Lady Potters of the past as we celebrate 50 years of Title IX.
All right, one last. We do need a closed session tonight.
Closed session is requested tonight for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives for five ILCS 120 slash two C two.
And we will probably maybe come back in and vote. So do we have a?
I move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Blunear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Verifying as a matter of procedure, we actually don't have any matters for remaining on the agenda for final action tonight, so, uh, we're going to come back out, but to close the meeting, we don't have anything on there for final.